Check, check, check. Aloha mai kako. Calling this meeting to order. Ovo no keia o kuike kamakea o halo. And I will be chairing tonight's meeting aloha ana ke. Mahale okopakahi a pau no ka huipuana no keiki ana mai. Elano pume ma'akoki ahi. Thank you all for making time this evening to join us. And discussing the things and concerns and the important stuff about our community and our ohana here in Wa Manalo. Welcome to Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board number thirty two, hybrid, regular Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board meeting. June ninth, twenty twenty-five, and it is now seven P M. Meeting here in person, Wa Manalo Public Library, meeting room four one dash one three two zero Kalaniana ole highway Wa Manalo. And we also, because it's a hybrid, we also have the link on the we have the WebEx link and it's on the Neighborhood Board website. I don't have to read those things, huh? Yeah, we're good. All right. The purpose of tonight's hola vai Neighborhood Boards and the Neighborhood Plan is to increase and ensure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. And the rules for engaging in tonight's meeting, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and those, that's for those who are joining us online on WebEx. And when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can mute and unmute for those dialing in on the phone by pressing star six. Please state your first name and last name for the record before moving into your comment or question. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Board Commission Office website. Aloha. Akahai, meaning kindness, to be expressed with tenderness. Lo'kahi, meaning unity, to be expressed with harmony. Olu'olu, meaning agreeable, to be expressed with pleasantness. Ha'a'a'a, meaning humility, to be expressed with modesty. Ahonui, meaning patience, to be expressed with perseverance in accordance with Hawaii Revise Statute, chapter five dash seven point five. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by State Sunshine Law H R S nine two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Two-thirds vote, nine of this thirteen-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Adding an item to the agenda, however, is not permitted if one, the item to be added is of reasonably major importance and two. Action on the item by the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to an agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. So ya'kakou, please silence all electronic devices. And this meeting is being recorded. With that, I want to ask if we can, ask our Neighborhood Board Assistant, Brandon, if you can do the roll call.
I'll start with a board member, Kinani Gramberg. I believe she's absent. Chair Kimiona Kane, I believe is absent. Board member Jenna McKeeg, I also believe is absent. Board member Lourdes Milan, present. Board member Mo'ata Mokulehua, I believe I see her online. Good evening. Thank you. Board member Kapio Lani Ni, I believe I also see online. Good evening. Thank you. Board member Ted Ralston, absent. Board member Brenda Wong. Oh. Hello, Board Member Wong. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board member Canela Kamaha Lo Hanui La, absent. And acting chair Kuike Kamakea o halo.
Eo, present.
All right, mahalo, Brandon. Next up on our agenda this evening, we have a message from our kupuna. So if there's any kupuna who'd like to offer any mana'o or ike to share with us here at the Neighborhood Board and our community abroad. Hekeno. Uncle, if you can come, please take the mic. Please state your name for the record.
Dave Larson. I've been here for a long time, in Wa Manalo, sixty-seven years. I made my eighty-four, you know? And I know it's getting late in life. And there are some things that have to be done. So that's why, you know, I think that I'd like to mention some of them. That's the thing. Our community's dying. We don't have, I mean, all our the relationships in the, in the community. Nobody, there's no parties anymore. There's no people getting together anymore in the stores. It's different. This was, this was beautiful here before. Down at the beach and everything, everything now, they got fences on this and rules for this and rules for that. We just don't get together. If you go right across from Kionas, there used to be something going on all the time. We used to have camping there. And the people would all get together and then somehow they, somebody complained about something. Yeah, we drink beer. Yeah. And we have a little peleke once in a while, but we take care of it. Take care of it ourselves. And it's never, it never gotten out of control. But it's how we got together and been able to talk and about our kids or what's going on in, in the community. Nobody knows really what's going on. There's no there's no fellowship anymore. I remember we used to sit down there at the pier, I mean, at at Kionas. And, you know, that's when Gabby would play at times, you know? And then in later years, one thing is really sad for me is, is Heywood Kalima was a good friend. He saw things, we saw things, some, some things the same way. And there was one thing that when he left, that he took with him. And I always thought, if we don't have someplace to play music, lost. He played the spoons and he played the bass. Nobody plays the spoons anymore. No kid's got a chance to see what, how you can make music. You just want a bunch of people together. That's gone. We, all I can say is really, is, I'll have something else to say later, but is people got, we, we have to be together. We're a tribe in a way, in a sense. And it's just, it's ridiculous in a way now. People are afraid of each other. Please don't be afraid of each other. We're supposed to support each other. Supposed to love one another. And I love the people that I've known, you know, very much. A lot of them are, most all of them are gone now, but kind of one of the last ones, right? I planned to be here for a little while longer, but old person could say.
Mahalo, Coach. We appreciate your wisdom and your experience and please, the mic's always open to share. Yeah, so we welcome your aloha and your mana'o. Kala mai kako, I overstepped possibly the most important item on our agenda tonight, and that's to open us up in pule. And would anybody here like to volunteer to open us up in prayer, open us up in pule? Mahalo, Anthony.
Heavenly Father in Jesus' name, we come before you tonight with thanksgiving, oh God. Father, we thank you for allowing us to come here tonight, Father God, to this meeting. Father, you help us, Lord, and of course, we have to ask the boy tonight. And Father, we give everything to you, Father God, that you have your way in our midst here tonight, each and every one of us that's here. Father, bless this meeting tonight, Lord. Bless every member that's here tonight, Father. And for those who could not be here, Lord, we ask God that you bring them back the next appointed time. Father, we ask all these things in your name, in Jesus' grace. Amen and amen.
Mahalo for the pule. Ola, ola, ola. Next up on our agenda item this evening is olaluno'ia'au kamahina. And I'd like just to share one with us this evening as we head into the summer months into what we hope is more fellowship within community, yeah, and with ohana. Kalai kamauli'ola. Again, it's kalai kamauli'ola, the sun is the source of life. You know, as we head into summer and we can just expect more beach days with our keke, you know? Just understand that the warmth of the sun, you know, the blessings of akua brings us life. So with that, you know, I'd like to encourage all of our kupuna, to encourage our mo'opuna to utilize our spaces, occupy our spaces, go to our beaches, use our parks. Yeah, get to know each other once again. So again, kako, kalai kamauli'ola. All right, next up on our agenda item section two this evening is emergency providers. First up is Honolulu Fire Department. Aloha, and if you can please state your name for the record.
Aloha. My name is Firefighter Three James Templow. I'm from the Wa Manalo Fire Station, Engine Twenty-Seven. Thank you, Chair, board members, members of the community and my colleagues. Tonight, I will deliver the statistics and the fire tip for the month, uh, fire tip for the month of May. In the month of May, there are one nuisance fire, four ninety, or forty-nine medical calls, one motor vehicle collision and one ocean rescue. Our fire tip is actually an announcement and we are excited to announce the launch of two new public data tools on our official website at fire.honolulu.gov. The Incident Trend Dashboard gives residents easy access to five years of emergency data by neighborhood, including fire, rescue, medical and hazardous material incidents. With interactive maps and charts, the dashboard helps communities better understand emergency trends in their areas. The Fire Response Search Tool replaces the previous response mapping tool, which is no longer supported and was recently taken offline. This tool enables individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidents in which they have an interest in or may have been involved in or affected by. This tool also enhances transparency and provides residents an efficient and direct, or with efficient and direct access to incidents in a secure and accessible format. Developed by the Honolulu Fire Department's Planning and Development Division with the help of, help from the city and county Honolulu Po'okele Fellows Intern, these data tools reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency, innovation and community engagement. To access these tools, please visit fire.honolulu.gov/news dash and dash info. At this time, I can accept any questions or concerns.
Mahalenui, please stand by for any questions. I'd want to open the floor to our board members online. Hello, board members, any questions for Kinai'ahi? All right, hearing and seeing none, anyone in, in the room? Board members? A'ole? All right, stand by, please. I'd like to open the questions to the floor to the community. Any questions for our Kinai, please? Uncle, if you can please come to the mic so, so we can get your name for the record.
Dave Larson. The ocean rescue.
If you can please repeat the question in the mic.
The question was, what was the ocean rescue that we had last month in the month of May? At this time, I don't have that info, but under the direction of the H of the Administration, I'm to defer any questions or inquiries to, to the Administration and we'll get back to you next month.
Hekeno. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Uncle, if you can, please come to the mic.
For our, a long time ago, our Neighborhood Board, we got a, one of those seadoo for one of the, for the rescue out here for our people. Because that's a little bit of a swim for the lifeguards. And now we don't have it. Kailua came and they were using it at their fire department. But that was supposed to be for, for Wa Manalo Fire Department. But it's been gone for a long time. Nobody said anything. It didn't, it never did see much water. But seems like it'd be a nice thing to have over here. Because then the guys out there on the reef, when they're diving out on the reef, we got a lot of people that, that want to go, that dive, that have never really, you know, they're, they're kind of experimental divers. They've got everything on them. But they really don't know the water out there and it's a good chance that some of them are.
Mahaloka David, is there another question in there somewhere? Okay. So maybe we can expand the question to, is, is, is the Kinai'ahi, is, is our firehouse equipped? You know, to what you guys wouldn't potentially need for emergency response?
Thank you, Chair. We, we got the two questions.
Yep. Mahalo. Any further questions from the community? And further down the line in our agenda, we will have a chance to hear from our lifeguards as well. All right, hearing and seeing none. Next up on our agenda this evening is our Makai, Honolulu Police Department. You have the floor.
Good evening, Board and members of the audience. I'm Lieutenant Sanford Yu, one of your three lieutenants for this district on night watch. Present the stats to you from me. Motor vehicle theft remain the same at one. Burglaries decreased from four to one. Regular thefts increased from two to five. Motor vehicle break-ins increased from three to five. And robberies decreased from two to zero. I'm willing to answer any questions at this time.
Mahalo, Lieutenant. I'd like to open the floor out to our members online. No questions? Mahalo. Members in library tonight? I don't have any further questions for you, so I'd like to open the floor up to our community. Do you have any questions for our Makai this evening?
Chair, I have one. This is Ted. I couldn't get my mic on in time.
Okay. All right, Ted.
Thanks very much. Question, questions are starting to come in to the, for the neighbors here in, in the beach community, the beach road community, the beach lots regarding just an incredible amount of truck traffic and big ruts dug in the sand on the beach. And people setting up concert-type amplifiers and music systems and such. And no one quite knows what to do about it. Nine-one-one doesn't produce a productive answer and/or response half the time. And so we're getting more and more of this. Just wonder what we can do. One of the neighbors here did suggest maybe we need to block off the access to the beach in Hunananiho. I think there's some access there and maybe not at the beach park with boulders or something like has been done in other places like at Sandy Beach as a way to minimize access, but we, we seem to have quite a problem in this regard, sir.
If you do see any, or have any noise complaints, please call nine-one-one. If your problem is not addressed, please call the Kailua Station and a supervisor will assist you. Vehicles are not allowed on the beach. No bonfires, no amplified music. To an extent, yeah, but it depends what's reasonable, but please call nine-one-one. Don't hesitate.
Yeah, and, and again, when people do, what they get is, you know, we get a typically, you get a pretty, pretty long wait. All circuits are busy type thing. And then when you finally do get ahold of somebody, it's nothing, nothing occurs as a result. We've had that, that situation the last four or five calls. So we'll take your, we'll take your advice though, okay? We'll tell the people that there's no response on nine-one-one within, what, thirty seconds? Give a call to Kailua Police Department.
No, 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 no. No, you need to wait to speak to a dispatcher. All officers are dispatched via the dispatch communication center. If you hang up, then it gets treated differently. It gets treated as an emergency. So don't hang up. You gotta wait on the phone. I know the nine-one-one call time can be long. They are understaffed, severely understaffed, but you need to be patient.
Okay, then what we'll do, how, how, how do we, how do we then actuate your concept of calling Kailua Police Department? If there's no response, do we wait twenty minutes and then call Kailua?
No, call the station if the response you get is not to your satisfaction. Someone will come, an officer will come. A lot of times, they come, the truck on the beach is gone. Depending on the circumstances. So it's not that the call is not addressed. It's maybe they didn't find anything. So if you experience the problem ongoing, after you have called, call back. And then you would call the station. But again, the problem might have been addressed, but you might not necessarily know the outcome, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ted. Lieutenant, if you can stand by, I'd like to call Brenda Wong.
Yes, I just want to add on to that. On the left parking lot at Hunananiho, we've called numerous times. There's a wide opening for trucks and vehicles to go into the beach. As we, many people have called and it's actually very unsafe. One of the park workers says it's very safe, unsafe because they're going in and it's very dangerous because somebody could get killed because vehicles are going in and out. So I don't know if it's you or Bellows, but we would like to ask if the boulders can be placed specifically at that entrance. I think it's, we've been asking for it for about three or four months already.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction, either Parks and Rec or the fellows Air Force Base.
Yeah, the Parks and Recs are calling the cops because they see this happening.
Well, we'll address the vehicle on the sand, but we don't have any jurisdiction to put any boulders or barriers, you know?
Thank you.
Mahalo.
My question is, for the vehicles on the beach, when you see them, you know, they can go videotape them so you can say, hey, they were going up and down. Does that help or not help?
Only thing a video works for us is for fireworks enforcement. If you can get the license plate and let the dispatcher know, at least we can go to their house if they're close by. And verbally counsel them about not doing that again, you know?
All right, if you can stand by, I'd like to open the questions up for our community. Community, do we have any questions for our Makai? Online or in the room? All right, hearing and seeing none.
We'll be outside for a little while if anybody has questions.
Mahalo, Lieutenant.
It's, I get more clothes on than you guys. It's a little bit hot in here.
I appreciate you. Mahalo for your service. All right, kako, moving on with our agenda this evening, the filling of board vacancies. We have three vacancies. One singular vacancy in Sub District Nine. And that's the Old Homestead to Beach Homes to Makapuu. Do we have any volunteers? Do we know? Do we have any volunteers this evening? Hearing and seeing none. All right, the next vacancy is Sub District Ten. That's Aglots, Backroads. Volunteers? Any nominations? Hearing and seeing none. Our last vacancy is Sub District Eleven Haleapuni. Any volunteers? Nominations? All right, well, community, you know, it's very important that we, we figure out ways to engage at this level. This is the first level of governance when it comes to all things of our community. So if you guys know anybody that could possibly be interested that live in these three sub-districts. Again, it's the Old Homestead all the way to Makapuu, Aglots, as well as Haleapuni. Just let us know. And yes, Lulu?
Question. You know how they're all for each sub-district?
Yeah.
Can we, at one point, make them at large to make it easier or is it has to be that sub-district represented?
There is a process. So there, there is a process that we can create more at-large seats and absorb these sub-districts into other sub-districts. You know, we talked, we talked a bit about that last year. And we're just waiting for the Chair, Chair Kane, you know, to initiate that process. Again, we want to be transparent with our community. And we want to ensure that all of our districts and sub-districts are represented well. That's why it's, you know, important that if we can find somebody that represents these sub-districts, you know, that lives in these spaces, that, you know, is part of that fabric of that community, those communities, then yeah, we'd like to include their voice. But if not, you know, we can figure out how to explore processes to make up the body of this Neighborhood Board. Mahalo for your question. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we can move on. Public agencies report. First up is Board of B W S. Aloha. Daniel, you're online? Okay, you have the floor.
Hi, Daniel Ornelas with the Board of Water Supply. So for the month of May, we have no listed water main breaks for Wa Manalo. And then also the water announcement for the month from the Board. Each year, the Board of Water mails customers an annual report on the quality and contents of the drinking water in their district. Effective July one of this year, Board of Water will be providing this report twice a year now. It will be mailed to you in July as well as December of each year. The, the report is also available online at boardofwatersupply.com. And you can also call our Communications Department at seven four eight five zero four one for any questions. And then one follow-up I had requested, was requested by Kimiona last month. Just if there were any scheduled Board of Water work for Wa Manalo. And there's nothing currently scheduled for Wa Manalo on the, on our schedule. That's all I have.
Mahalo, Daniel, for your follow-up and your report, if you can please stand by. I'd like to open up if any of our members online had any questions for Board of Water Supply. Any in person? Mahalo. And now I'd like to open up the floor for our community if they had any questions for B W S, Board of Water Supply. Any community members online? Hearing and seeing none. Any community members in person? All right, hearing and seeing none. Daniel, mahalenui again for making time this evening and for your report and follow-up.
You're welcome.
See you next time. Okay, next up on our agenda this evening is the Mayor's Report. Okay, mahalo. Director? Director Phelan, you have the floor.
Aloha, Burbanners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, aloha.
Thank you. So the highlights from the Mayor's Office over the last month, we had a very moving Memorial Day ceremony at Punch Bowl. And we want to mahalo all the people in the community who joined in as they do each year in helping pick the flowers and so lay, so that we're able to have a lay on every, every person's grave marker at Punch Bowl along with the flags and much mahalo to the Boy Scouts for helping with that. The Honolulu's Emergency Medical Services is pleased to announce they had seventeen new ambulances come on island, which and have been retrofitting also other ambulances so that they're all at peak condition for being able to respond to people for the nine-one-one calls for the ambulances. And then the city's been honoring the police department, workers for Police Week, especially the fallen officers who have passed away in the line of duty. And then a group of bus drivers and dispatchers at the bus who have been working for the city for fifty years to be able to bring community members, transport them around. And then have participated in the annual food bank drive on behalf of the city workers. And then we're happy to say that Summer Fun has started this week. And so we have Wa Manalo going full tilt with both buildings open for the keke, which is fantastic. Sorry. And then in response to some of the questions that came up from last month, a resident on La Milo Road was asking about speed humps and the installation of two to three speed humps along the road to address the unsafe driving condition. So the Department of Transportation Services will conduct an investigation, which includes a review of the area's traffic collision history. They do a traffic survey and a site investigation. And then they will take action along the street that is supported by the analysis. And they'll inform the board of the status of their findings by the end of November twenty twenty five, because they do have to do the traffic survey and get the other information on the street. And then the Board Chair had asked for a question about the fish at the reservoir in Ho'omaluhia. So this is a manmade reservoir that was created as part of the Kanihohe Kailua Dam Flood Control Project, constructed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. According to the Department of Land and Natural Resources Division of Aquatic Resources, there are no known indigenous fish species in the reservoir. Over the years, they have been non-native fish introduced, so including tilapia, grass carp. One fish I can't pronounce, six clibs, peacock, cabass, and some catfish. I do have a contact information for the chair that I'll send to him for some person at Division of Aquatic Resources who has done some education programs at the reservoir, who might be able to give some more information for the chair. And then I did hear the discussion about the boulder at Hunananiho or the opening where near, I guess it was, if I could get some more information on the location of that. But you folks should be aware that the grounds maintenance staff can submit a work order that would go to the maintenance support services for that assistance. And so that's usually the way that they can get that information over to get some response. But if you give me the information tonight, we can look into it. I know sometimes we're not able to find boulders large enough to stop vehicles because a lot of people resort to self-help and move the boulders, and so they need to be a certain size. We have found concrete blocks, which are not as natural. But you know, we have started putting those into some areas. So if I could get the location more specific, I can get that information over to the Park Department. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mahalo, Director. Members online, do we have any questions for the mayor's report? In person?
I've been here last month some.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Director Thielen, thank you for that report. And would that comment about the boulders or concrete blocks also apply to Wamanalo Beach Park where there's another small section where truck access is possible? Is it, is it reasonable to put a barrier up there as well?
You know, so it, there's always a balance. We have to, like I heard the conversation earlier about the beach rights of ways. Because these are areas where the public accesses the beach. We have to provide wide enough access for Americans with Disabilities Act for people to be able to get through. So we're not really able to block the e-bikes, e-motocycles or things like that, you know, for areas because they can get through a space that's wide enough for a wheelchair access. When it comes to vehicles, I think it's always a site-specific answer because, you know, you, you, how many boulders and concrete blocks do you want to have lining? Your beach area, we have put in bollards and chains adjacent to the parking lots to prevent people from driving from the parking lot onto the beach. But when you're talking about you kind of chaining off the beach access itself where the beach park grass intersects with that, that kind of gets to a community preference question because you have a lot of people walking back and forth in that area. So it's, it's a difficult situation. And we find that when there are people determined to drive on the beach, they will find ways around to be able to get to that, that location. So it's just a matter of what the community preference would be as far as barricading that access, because then you're also blocking people that are legitimately walking back and forth. And you're changing the feel of the beach area, which also impacts people. So that's a long answer, sorry.
That was a conditional yes, right?
We would be happy to go take a look at the specific location that you're talking about. But it's just what I've found is that when it comes to people driving on the beach, you're, you're trying to block what's a, what's a porous area. And so you may block one area, but people will find ways around it. And, and securing it so that it's not possible for people to drive on there really requires measures that are above and beyond what most of the community want to see on their beaches.
Okay.
Yeah, mahalo, I see Member Wong's hand up.
Yeah, Laura, thank you for showing interest. You want the specific location, is the left parking lot? The camping side, right at the beginning of the parking lot, there is a wide opening like, I don't know, seven, eight feet wide, so you can't miss it. And the road is bumpy and cars have been stuck there and trucks go in and out. There's a section right after that, that they put boulders there, so that part was stopped and they opened up another section. You can't miss it, it's like eight feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo, Director, if you can stand by, I believe we have one more question.
Sorry, my question was, a few months ago, the Parks and Rec Committee created a letter with specific items that you asked of us of what we wanted, what was, what is needed. It got approved. I was just wondering, did you receive it? Have you guys looked at it? Do you have any ideas of anything?
I have not received it, but sometimes letters that come into my office are routed directly to the staff. Do you know when that letter was sent?
Brenda, do you remember?
It was months ago, like at least three months ago.
So let me give you my email right now. And then also what I could do is try to track it down through my secretary tomorrow. But my email is my name with a dot in the middle of it. So it's laura.thielen@honolulu.gov and you can send it directly to me. Most times when I don't get emails, it's because nobody knows how to spell my last name. So, you know, if you guys have it or you can look it online, but it's L A U R A dot Thielen is T like Tom, H I E L E N at honolulu.gov. And then I will also see if we can track it down. So you think it went in about?
We can resend it, we could easily resend it also today.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo, do we have any further questions for the mayor? Okay, I'd like to open up this time for our community. Community members online, any questions for our mayor? In person? All right, we have one question. Please approach the mic.
Dave Larson. We got a serious problem here with our kids. It seems like our government or whatever has left them behind. I don't know anything that's been done for our kids in the past twenty, thirty years? If anybody can remember anything that's been done for them. Our gym, this is for the mayors or for the parks. It's, it's been shut down again. There's something awfully fishy about the, the way that they do the work. I'm, I imagine all the work that's being done should be done by contracts. Time, amounts of money and everything else. I know the fences rented. We pay rent for that fence that's around it. I have two grandchildren, great-grandchildren that have missed out on basketball and volleyball to use the gym. We went through a pandemic and we lost a whole bunch of kids. Every season that they lose is, chances are they won't go on and play. It's ridiculous. We are the, we're supposed to be farmers and raising our children or without our kids, we die. It's that simple. And we complain about when they run amok and everything else. They're hurting, our kids are really hurting. I noticed the homestead, what do they got? What do you got down there at the homestead? Anything for the kids? I mean, besides the, the way they can have, you know.
Mahalo Coach, is the question directed to me or our mayor? Okay. We have community nonprofit programs, you know, that try their best to service our people.
Right.
And we have, you know, the diehard coaches that I still see, you know, afternoons just out there, you know, and we have the diehard families that, you know, choose to be involved in sports and continue to take their keiki. All in the homestead, we've got Wamanalo Canoe Club. You know, again, these are all community groups, you know, that have long, you know, generational ties into the community and they see the same thing that you see.
But they have no place, no place for parents, young parents to take their kids and, and in a stroller, whatever, or a little park, they don't have anything that's to nurture the kids, the small kids with. As far as the, the sports, how many sports are here? We were, we would have been state champs out of here. We got some of the best kids in the world right here in, in Wamanalo. I mean, I thought it was a privilege to be able to coach the kids from, from here. Because they are, they're, they listen, they're good, they're good athletes. And it's a way to, to show themselves off. But we got fields that got big cracks in them. Want to settle the cracks or solve the cracks, you water the field. We got a baseball field down there at Azavito that you can't play baseball on. Got big backs up and everything else, but you can't play because a left field is too short. Because he keep stop cutting the grass back, they gotta go all the way back to the trees. I mean, we got people here in the community with all kinds of equipment, and I know about that. The minute we tried to do anything is like when we built the ramp down at Coyones. There they come, everybody coming, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't better your own community. We gotta follow certain rules, of course, there's certain rules to follow. But this is ours. This belongs to us, don't belong to them. You know, and, and but we need our fields fixed. We, we desperately need something for our kids so that they can be proud when they go to a game. Kids come here and they drive by and, you know, where, oh, that's kind of grummy looking. We cut the grass, I've mowed the grass out there, got in trouble for mowing the grass. But that's nothing, that's trouble. If, if, if the people don't wise up, I think we're about a close to his last, you know, one of the last draws for our kids. You know, to have, they're now, they're all on the e-bikes and running all, you know, they're doing things that we really don't appreciate because for their health. You know, riding around on one wheel and it's, they're great, look at how good athletes they are. But if our sports, our baseball, how much is a baseball? How much is football? Football is, is unaffordable for so many families. We used to, you know, wear the same uniform, it was a privilege to wear a number that, you know, what's his name wore, you know, a couple of years ago or last year. And now I get to wear that uniform. We've, we, athletics is so important. It's how you get to, how you get to learn to mingle with others without fighting and you learn to work together. And I just think that the, the city has let us down big time for our kids. So as far as that one. The, get that one next.
Mahalo Coach Larson, Director Thielen, you know, as stewards of our recreational and green spaces within our community, you know, we, we have a lot of kuleana to, before us, you know, to catch up with what, what's been, what has been weathered down for generations. And, you know, I stand here as a member of this board and community, you know, Makakau. Let's have those conversations when it's appropriate. So mahalo Director Thielen for representing our mayor. And with that, if there's no further questions or comments. I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda this evening. Community organizations and reports. First up, Wamanalo Elementary and Intermediate School. We have Principal Delacruz. Okay. Moving on, Blanch Pope Elementary School, Kula Kailua, Wamanalo. Principal Rizentes. Next up, Malamahunua Public Charter School. Principal España.
Aloha, Vice Chair and Board Members. This is Board Member Kapialani Ni. I would like to present on behalf of Denise España.
You have the floor.
Okay, mahalo. So I will be sharing my screen. Can everybody see that?
You know.
Okay, so this school year was ended with so much to do. So here we have our Papa Mahina. Couple of our keikis who ended their year with their hoikee interviews. They got to share their projects, talk about their essential questions with community members, kumu and other classmates. Also, also this year was a big year for us too. We got to celebrate and acknowledge our first graduating class from Malamahunua, who this year graduated from high school. So we got to spend the day, they got to spend the day with us reconnecting with some of their old kumu, new kumus also, and sharing just words of wisdom with our eighth grade graduating class. Here we have, we had our kihe ceremony for our fifth graders who passed their defense. So this is after getting their kihe. And this is also our eighth grade class who had their pukakula. And just this past week, this is the third summer, Malamahunua, along with Kamakau, got to spend a week in Alaska with the Native Alaskan Science and Engineering Program at Alaska University. So we had three keiki from Malamahunua and I think three from Kamakau. They got to spend time learning how to build mock bridges, learning how to do water testing. They learned about aviation from Alaska Airlines. Also, they got to live and eat in the dorms, it was something exciting for a lot of them. It's a little experience of what. experience of what college life would be like. Um, and it was a really great opportunity for our Haumana to um build relationships with Kamakau and um some of our Native Alaskan friends. Um, just some important dates for Malamohunua, um, coming up this Friday, June thirteenth, we have our Bishop Museum, Maokutu Makai and Wamanalo Maualoa. Um, June sixteenth through the eighteenth, um I think we have our math camp um with Kamakau and WCC. Um, also, June, July fourteenth through the eighteenth, our Marine Science Career Explorations. June twenty first through the twenty fifth, we have our Kinder Camp here at St. Matt's. Um, June twenty seven, July twenty seventh, sorry, uh, we are celebrating La Ho'i Ho'i A'ar at Thomas Square. And then July twenty eighth, the dreaded day, first day back for Kumuu. And uh August first is first day of uh school. I think that's all that I have. So.
Mahalo. Uh, members online, we have any questions for our community partner? Community, you have any questions, comments online? In person? Mahalo. Uh, we have a comment from Coach Larson. He said, it's the best school around. I believe it's Mopuna.
Mahalo.
And um just please send our uh congratulations out to uh Principal España on the new, the recent award that you fought.
Yes, will do. Yes, will do.
Aloha. Mahalo again. Next up, uh, for our community partners, uh, Pu Malamohukai. Right, seeing none, Windward Community College. Seeing none, uh, University of Hawaii, College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources, SITAR. All right. Um, just want to send our aloha out to our Ohana and Ho'i Job Corps.
We do can hear?
Yeah, aloha. You have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. Well, um, most of you ha saw it on the news or heard about it through our outreach that Department of Labor um late last month, um said they were no longer um extending the job corps contracts to over a hundred centers throughout the United States. We were given directives um last week to send our students home and our staff would be getting layoff notices on June twentieth. Now, between the Wamanalo site and the Maui site, that would affect over two hundred and thirty young adults and a hundred and sixty one staff, many are Wamanalo residents. Luck. Sorry, luckily, um, uh, they filed a um uh temporary restraining order and a federal judge has honored that. So um we've returned students this week, as many as chose to come back. We didn't have to lay off staff. So there'll be hearings in the upcoming weeks. I'm um, I'm hopeful that will be completely reinstated. The transparency report that Department of Labor published, everything basically was unfounded or inaccurate. Comment with the depart, or the um Secretary of Labor last week and voiced their concern. So I'm optimistic that we're going to get fully reinstated, but at this point, uh, the students that were sent home last week are already returning. But as you can imagine, it's caused chaos in their lives and even in our staffs, right? Uh, we had the state come in to do rapid response so staff could learn about unemployment and medical benefits. Um, and several of them have taken other jobs, but um we hope to get fully reinstated and serving, serving our youth again soon. And thank you to all of our community members, um employers, locally elected officials, and especially all of our members of Congress who uh really rallied to support the program. Mahalo.
Mahalo Auntie Julie. Um, please stand by for questions. Uh, any questions or comments from our members online? Hearing and seeing none, any questions or comments from our community? Online or in person? Please take the mic.
Uh, hey aloha, I'm a Stacey in Ke Kamaluskeen. I'm from uh, I'm the Bishop's Word of St. Matthew's Episcopal Church. Um, I'm wondering, is there anything that the community can do to support or help Job Corps just in general? Like, what can the average person do to support you guys in this time?
Sure. Again, the hearings aren't until the seventeenth. Reach out to all of our members of Congress, Senator Hirono, Senator Schatz, Representative Case, Representative Takura, just to uh share your support of the program. You know, the more they hear from uh their constituents, the community, um, the better, even though they're all very supportive, but that's what they can do. They can, you know, um submit their request online, call the local offices. And mahalo for that.
Mahalo, mahalo, mahalo. Um, we're sending our aloha uh with you folk, Auntie Julie.
I have a question.
Please. Representative Martin.
Yep, so I'm so glad that everything is looking a little better. Um, I have a question. I got a call from uh the Dynamic Compassion and Action Group that does the food bank at the district park. And I know you folks at Job Corps youth have been really the bulk of their volunteer team. And I wonder if you will be back there this um coming Monday, the next Monday.
I'm not sure about this coming Monday. Again, we are, but we'll be back there as soon as we can. I I know they had another group help out last week after we notified them. Um, because there's still a lot of moving parts, as you can imagine, of returning the students and and getting back into their their normal studies.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Mahalo Nui again, Auntie Julie. Moving on with our uh agenda this evening. We need the organizations. Uh, next up, Wamanala Health Center.
Aloha.
Aloha, you have the floor.
Um, I just wanted to, mahalo Auntie Julie. Um, thank you for all the hard work you're doing. Um, I also wanted to share, on last Friday, we held the Aha'aipono at Wamanalo Health Center and it was a a great event where a lot of people gathered, uh focused on food and aina. And we just wanted to share our mahalo to Wainumanalo Elementary for allowing us to park there, to Chair Kanae for leading our protocol and being there throughout the event, and to all the speakers and practitioners that joined us. So we're just grateful for the community's support and look forward to um what else comes in the future Aha'aiponos that are held. Um, I also wanted to share about Medicaid changes. We reached out to many patients in March, just encouraging people to um be proactive in case Medicaid changes do happen, which has been in the news. So I wanted to share that encouragement again for those that have Medicaid. Um, it would be a good time to make sure to refill your medications, to visit your doctor, your dentist, your optometrist, uh, to complete any health screenings for breast cancer, cervical cancer, colorectal cancer, and to stay up to date with any immunizations. So if you aren't sure about your eligibility, you can reach out to our Mamaki team. Um, and if you'd like to schedule a visit or speak with uh your provider, you can call us at two five nine seven nine four eight. Those are my announcements. Mahalo.
Mahalo Nui Jasmine. Um, members, do we have any questions for Wamanala Health Center online? In person? All right, hearing and seeing none. Uh, members of the community online? Any questions or comments for Wamanala Health Center? In person? All right, hearing and seeing none. Mahalo for making time this evening, Jasmine.
Mahalo.
Aloha.
Aloha.
All right, next up, Wamanalo Hawaiian Homestead Association. Do we have any representatives? Hearing and seeing none, uh, military reports. First up, Bellows Air Force Station. Aloha.
Hi, I'm Marie Gagne, and I just wanted to make an announcement that we're going to have the RAB meeting on June twelfth at seven o'clock on Bellows Air Force Station.
Mahalo. If you can stand by for questions. Members of the community, I mean, call them, I, members of the board, do you have any questions, those online? This is for Bellows Air Force Station. Hearing and seeing none, those from the community? Hearing and seeing none. Mahalo, the report again is a RAB meeting, that's the Restoration Advisory Board for the Bellows Air Force Station, and it'll be uh June twelfth, what time again?
At seven PM.
At seven PM and uh those interested in attending, um, do they just show up to the front gate?
Yes, you'll need your driver's license um or a passport that is a US passport. Um, there's also a way to sign up online, and if you do that, um, or you can visit it virtually. Uh, I have the link. I couldn't find it on the Bellows website, though. So I can stand by or we can try to figure out how to get that out to the community um after, if that's okay.
Okay, mahalo. All right, no further questions. Moving on with our agenda this evening, Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Hi, good evening.
Aloha Kristi, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, community. Just few updates of um some activity that has occurred over the last week. Um, this past week on June third, we had the pleasure of hosting Mukapu Elementary um along with the Kai Loa Complex District Principals, Vice Principals, and other uh District Department of Education Leadership. Um, the purpose was to visit tour Nupia Fish Pond and several other cultural sites that are on base. Um, and this was all led by Hillary Pilialoha, who is the Staff Secretary and the lead for our Aloha Ambassador Program, which is a group of students who um focus on Hawaiian education and sharing that aloha with a lot of the new students as they come onboard and move to Hawaii so that their transition is um supported and positive and they have a good perspective moving forward during their time here. Um, it was, we had about seventy-five represented from the Kai Loa Complex. Um, it was a really good tour. Our um environmental team took them around the Nupia Complex, uh Fish Pond Complex, and uh talked about the environmental education component that they do Mukapu Elementary and some of the surrounding elementary schools that come and visit. Um, a couple of things moving forward, coming up. Two open base events that I've been reminding everybody about, and that's the uh Ko Piko Canoe Regatta, which is the thirteenth of July, Sunday. It is open base. Um, and also the airshow, which is August eighth, ninth, and tenth. Um, on the eighth, it is going to be open. There is opportunity for schools if they want to coordinate to bring their students on the Friday as a school uh fun trip, uh field trip, sorry about that. Um, then they can coordinate with me and I can connect them with our new school liaison officer who just started. I think she's in her second week, so she has her hands full, but there is opportunity for the schools to um coordinate to come on the Friday before the really busy Saturday and Sunday if they're interested. Um, and in that preparation for that airshow, I did want to um let the public know that there's going to be some training exercises that um will present um aircraft fire scenarios. Um, it is in preparation for the airshow. It is just a um a simulated training, um, but just to let the public know. And that's all I have, and I can stand by for any questions.
Mahalo Kristi. Members of the board, we have any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Kristi, I have one question. When you say, you know, for the Ko Piko Regatta, open base, what does that mean?
Um, it means that the gates will be open and then when you drive through, or when you go up to the gate and you are greeted by the sentry, you just let them know here for the canoe. And they'll smile and they'll check to make sure that you have no dogs, because no dogs are allowed. Uh, they'll mention if you have any questions on how to get there. Uh, communication has been made through, obviously, the head coaches during um, you know, um, meetings, the clubs on, and and you know what, we've been able to host this for the last ten years, so the everybody's pretty aware of what to expect and the rules and so on and so forth. But yeah, it's the best race course, most fair.
All right, mahalo Nui. Uh, I'd like to open up the time now for questions from our community. Community members online, do we have any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Members in person? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Kristi again, mahalo for making the time.
Mahalo. Have a good evening, aloha.
You too, aloha. All right, next up on our agenda is Hawaii Army National Guard. Do we have any representatives? Okay, seeing none. Okay. Section six of our agenda this evening, resident community concerns and announcement, public reports. Uh, first up is Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii. Seeing none. Okay, next is early eviction mediation program. Yeah. Um, lastly is other. Uh, we have one of our emergency responders, um, that's been here waiting patiently. Unfortunately, they didn't make it on this month's agenda and we, hopefully, we, moving forward, we can invite them to uh report monthly on our agenda, so if you'd like, mahalo Nui, please uh announce, say your name for the record.
Oh, good evening. My name is Lieutenant Jersey Faber with Honolulu Ocean Safety Windward Operations, uh District Two. I just wanted to present some statistics for the community. Uh, for the month of May twenty twenty-five, at our beaches in Wamanalo, this, these statistics do include local residents from all over the island, tourists and military. Um, our beaches from Mukapu to Wamanalo Beach Park, Hunan Nihoo and Bellows, we saw about a hundred, one thousand, three hundred ninety people attend our beach. Uh, us ocean safety officers, we made about six thousand preventative actions, which means we approaching people, warning them of hazards potentially in the water, on the sand, uh keeping them safe and out of harm's way. We made about, sorry, we made nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four public contacts, so that is um related to our preventative actions. But we did about seventy-three rescues this month from Mukapu to Bellows, uh with the most being at Mukapu Beach Park. Um, I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that anyone has for us in Ocean City in the community.
Mahalo, I'd like to open up the time now for uh our members online. Have any questions for ocean safety?
I just have one comment, uh, Quique.
Go ahead, Ted.
Uh, before we had the report from Ocean Safety, uh, like, uh, three or four months ago, we didn't have a report, but uh just want to let the everybody know that the first on scene for a rescue of a downed hang glider pilot in the reef area outside uh uh, outside the Maui Pier area was a Wamanalo Canoe Club, uh, senior crew. Just giving some credit.
Mahalo Ted. Mahalo. Were you in that canoe, Ted?
I was.
Appreciate your service. Mahalo, just giving credit where credit's due. Yeah, mahalo Nui again Ted for that, that comment and report uh for our community. Uh, do you have another member online that has a question or comment? Person.
I don't know if it's for you or not, but is hang gliding allowed? I know they've been doing it and I've seen them come and then they were landing at, I think, Coyotes for a while by accident and all that. Is that something that's allowed?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, hang gliding, or the hang gliders do have a designated area above Kapo. That's where the, where the windsock is. They mostly launch from the top of Makapu, too. I don't think, they're not allowed to land on our beaches here in Waianaealo. They land in the field at Kapo. You know, when you turn into Kapo, there's that green field on the left side. Sometimes it's up kept, sometimes it's not there. Uh, one of our lifeguards is actually very related in that community of hang gliders, but to my, to my knowledge, they're not allowed to land on our beach unless it's an emergency, and we do respond to that, too. But, um, yeah, if you, I, I can speak to my supervisor or see who's in charge of seeing what the rules are for hang gliding in Waianaealo.
Mahalo. I, members? I've have a question.
Yes.
Would this be reoccurring? So will some, someone from Ocean Safety be represented and reporting every month?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It might be myself or another lieutenant in District Two.
Forward that to the chair. In agenda, make sure it's on the agenda. Appreciate that, and I'd like to open up now questions from, from our community. We have members online? Got a hand? Chris Salis? Can you please unmute your mic? Go ahead. Kalamai, if you're speaking, we can hear you. Give it a few more moments. Okay, mahalo. In the interest of time, Mr. Salis, if you can drop your comment or question in the chat, and we can forward it. Oh, there you go. I can hear something coming through.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead. You have the floor.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, I'm Christopher Salis from Hawaii Bicycling League. I just wanted to let you guys know on Saturday, August sixteenth, uh, we're going to be doing our Waianaealo's backroad cleanup, uh, where we meet at the
Chris Kalamai, Chris Kalamai, um, right now, um, we're, we're closing up the questions and comments from, um,
Sorry.
Safety at the moment, and then I'll call you forward right after this, Chris.
Sure, sure.
Mahalo for your patience. Members of the community in person, any questions or comments for ocean safety? Hearing and, all right, thumbs up. Yeah, mahalos. Mahalo, ocean safety for being here this evening, and we look forward to your continued reports.
Thank you, guys. You guys have a good night.
You too, aloha. All right. Chris Salis, go ahead, you have the floor.
Hi, hello again. Uh, yeah, I just want to let you guys know on August sixteenth, a Saturday, we'll be doing our Waianaealo's backroads cleanup. And then the following month, on September twenty-eighth, a Sunday, will be the Honolulu Century Ride, starting in town at, uh, Kapalani Park, and then we'll be heading out towards Hawaii Kai, around Makapu, and then up the windward coast to Swansea Beach where the turnaround is, and be cycling back. Um, there'll be cyclists on the road up until five P M. And yeah, if you guys need more information, our website is hbl.org slash H C R. And, uh, I think I'm planning on, uh, being back next month if there's any other questions tonight or next month, just in case.
Mahalo, Chris, can you please repeat that?
Um, the website?
Both, the dates and
Sorry. I put the website in chat, and then the dates for the two events is Saturday, August sixteenth, and then Sunday, September twenty-eighth.
Awesome. And then you mentioned the backroads cleanup. Do you have a location?
Um. Yes, we meet at the Waianaealo District Park, and then we span out from there.
Awesome. Okay, mahalanoi, please stand by for questions. Members of the board online, do you have any questions for Mr. Salis? Hawaii Bicycling League. Hearing and seeing none. Community members, questions, comments? Online, in person? Hearing and seeing none. Chris, mahalanoi again for showing up this evening, and look forward to seeing you next month. Right. So we're at resident and the community concerns and announcements, others. So if there's anybody from the community who would like to make an announcement, please let me take online first. Anyone online? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Go ahead. Then we, we just go down the line. Mahalanoi, and if you please, uh, state your name for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bill Unruh. I work with the State Climate Commission, and my partner over here is Jonathan. He also works with the State Climate Commission. But, um, we're just doing some outreach, coming around to some of the neighborhood board meetings. You guys are our first neighborhood board meeting to attend. Anyway, the Climate Commission was formed a few years ago. It's made up of all the counties and the state departments. Because climate change is affecting us all because of our human impact, the Climate Commission was formed. And, um, you know, we've, we just, we, our sea levels are rising, we're getting really hot during the summer, our trade wind patterns have changed. And so we're trying to come up with a state climate action plan. All the counties are also developing their climate action plans. And, um, so Jonathan and I will stay a little bit after the meeting if you want to, um, chat with us a little bit about concerns you have about climate change. Uh, we do have a website, climate.hawaii.gov. You can go to as well, and, um, we also have an events page on there, climate.hawaii, climate.hawaii.gov slash events. And we're putting all these events around the islands that are happening that, um, that you guys might be doing here, such as, uh, doing some, some cleanups like Hawaii Bicycling League. We just partnered with them event, with them on an event a little over a week ago. Um, over the past year, we've attended about eighty, um, events around the islands, doing tabling, things like that. And we just want to get the word out that we're developing a climate action plan. We want community input. And we've already received about seven hundred, um, comments and feedback for this climate action plan that's in the draft form right now, being developed. Next month, we're going to be putting out to the community for feedback then to that plan about how we're moving forward. And so we're, you know, we're working on things such as bring more, bringing more renewable energies online. We need to decrease burning carbon, um, you know, fossil fuels. NOAA just sent out a release a couple of days ago. Our greenhouse gases are now at four hundred thirty parts per million, and that's the highest it's ever in recorded history. It's never been that high in millions of years. So we need to, um, decrease our carbon footprint dramatically, but, uh, anyway, we'll stay after the meeting here, and if you guys have any questions, drop on by, and we love to see all the great things the community is doing here. I was just at the Sher Woods yesterday for World Ocean Day, picking up plastic and beach, off the beach and everything else, but, uh, yeah, thank you so much. I got a couple of children's books here. If you guys have any children or grandchildren, drop by and see me, too. I'll give you a couple of books here. Right, I only have two books, but anyway. All right, thanks, you guys.
Mahalanoi, and before you step away from the mic, what's the web, the website again?
Climate.hawaii.gov.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
If you can stand by for some questions from our members and community. Members online, do we have any questions?
I guess, uh, Quikay, I do, Ted here.
Go ahead, Ted.
Uh, question, uh, could you provide your contact information in the chat or through, uh, uh, some means, uh, most interested in, in some conversations, and, and perhaps you could outline for us what the difference is, or the connection, or the similarity between the Governor's Climate Action Team, the various carbs that exist in the several counties, and then, uh, how, kind of related to that, how the green tax will be divvied up and applied to solutions in either the carb, carbs or the cat, uh, as you see that coming together.
Yeah, so the, the Climate Action Team, um, was a focus group that, uh, was put together by the Governor's Office for the Governor and to help also develop the green fee. And, um, we are not sure yet how those funds, I don't think they've developed, because it just passed. They are still working on the development of the mechanism on dispersing those funds and the priorities, what those funds are going to be used for. So we are, our office is currently out of the loop on that. We don't have any information to share on that. And we're hoping to be involved, though, because we, um, part of the Climate Action Plan is developing more renewables, replanting native forests. We've already lost one point five million acres of native forests, and, and we know that those are the most resilient forests we need. Um, but those are just, you know, off the top of my head, but, uh, so we are hopeful that, um, there will be a nice mechanism put forward that all of the communities will benefit. And, uh, and it's, it's great to see the, the Governor is, um, pushing forward for more resilient Hawaii. We really need that, but yeah. But yeah, I can, I can, um, I can write down my email address for you if you want to put that in the chat. And, uh, that'd be great. I'll step over there real quick afterwards.
And then, just for clarification, the commission was created by the legislature, correct?
Yes.
And then so separate from that, Ted, to your response, um, the Governor's team was created by the Governor.
Yes, true.
So the functions are totally different because the commission reports to the legislators.
Yes, very.
And that, that's kind of what was underlying my question, Quikay, in terms of how these coordinate, correlate, and, and keep crossing each other's path.
Appreciate your line of questions. Do you have any further questions, Ted?
Sure, but I'll, I'll reserve it up for a private conversation.
Awesome, handled that offline. Uh, any questions from our, the other members of our, our board? Hearing and seeing none. I'd like to open it up right now to the community online. Any questions, community in, in house in person? Mahalo, and so the comment from, um, our community was no windmills, and we, we all know how passionate Waianaealo is about that. And that's, that's a matter that needs to be taken up with the state, uh, with the state's Office of Energy. Because it's a state office of energy that applies for the permit with the D O I, yeah, to explore, uh, offshore energy. It's not the commission itself, so, uh, however, mahalo for your comment.
Yep. You are absolutely right, Hawaii State Energy Office.
Yeah, because I also sit on the federal commission. No, mahalo. Mahalo for your time this evening, gentlemen. Uh, we appreciate you guys sharing up.
We'll be here for a little bit afterwards, so feel free.
We're going to get a, a contact point?
Yeah, I'm going to give her my email.
Lulu's going to put it in the chat for, for all of us.
Yep.
Okay, mahalanoi. Okay, next up, uh, community, uh, members, go ahead, community partners.
Uh, aloha, I'm Stacey Kekai Maluski, and I'm the Bishop's Warden of Saint Matthew's Episcopal Church. I'm here to sort of represent our organization. So recently, we've kind of revamped a food basket ministry. Um, it's been here for years. It was started by Auntie Nikki Hines, famous musician here in Waianaealo. I think her, ever passed by Seven Eleven, you might see her. It was carried on by her granddaughter, Auntie Momi Respotnik. She, um, recently passed away. She was kind of heading it, and so as the church, we've kind of taken over to sort of keep it, keep it going, keep this ministry going. One of the things that we've noticed is that, uh, because Auntie Momi was able to do it sort of full on, she would do it every Wednesday. Um, but as the church, we've had to reorganize some things, and so we've changed the date in times, and we've noticed that not a lot of people show up. And so we're here to sort of like advertise and announce it. Um, there is a food basket ministry at Saint Matthew's Episcopal Church. That's, uh, four one zero five four Eukai Street, every second and fourth Saturday of the month from ten A M. to twelve P M. Um, I do have flyers out here, if you want to distribute them to anyone who needs the information. Uh, we give out to anyone, like, uh, houseless, uh, families. We do have, uh, we're a part of Ma'lamahonua. I don't know, we, we sort of host their kinder to second grade, so we have had some Ma'lamahonua families come by and pick up some food. We offer like groceries, and so like there's canned foods, stuff like that to take home. We also try to provide hot foods at the, at the, at the church, so that you can have grinders right there. So like, we try to build some fellowship with the community. Uh, there's a pop-up tent, we set up tables, chairs, we eat, listen to music, talk stories, stuff like that. If we don't have hot food, we always have coffee and water. Uh, we're just trying to build pelina with the community and help feed the hungry. We also, for this month, so actually this Saturday, we have a food basket, so if anyone needs food, come out by. Uh, we also have a partnership going on right now with Kaiser Permanente. Should probably have these dates memorized. Uh, so this Thursday, June twelfth, uh, we'll have a Kaiser Mobile Health van out at the church. They'll be right out the parking lot on the Kalani, Kalaniana Ole side. This is for anyone who is a part of Kaiser, so if you have Kaiser as a plan, um, they'll do routine checkups, uh, wellness, wellness checks on child, sports, physicals, um, they do blood pressure, stuff like that. So if you are a part of Kaiser, I need to, don't want to go all the way out to get it, uh, right there at Saint Matthew's in our parking lot. Um, that will be on June twelfth, July third, and July tenth. So that's what's going on over there.
Mahalanoi. Um, have any questions from the members of the board? Online? No questions or comments? I just want to, mahaloi folks, Saint Matthews. Yeah, um, the national statistics is one in every six keiki go to sleep hungry. And that's really, you know, the data shows that that's during school. Yeah, now that school is out of session, you know, it's even more critical, you know, that we reach our ohana in need. And, you know, for, for ohana that is in need, because, you know, our ohana, we were there. Yeah, it's, it's not easy to seek help and seek assistance, you know, so just, we, we ask that the hali pule, we just pule over them, you know, that that we remove those, those boundaries, you know, that may inhibit them from reaching folks who have the capacity to help Ma'lamahonua. So mahalo the church. Um, I'd like to open up to community members first, as you stated, trying to build pelina. So any members from the community online who, uh, okay, Brett Martin.
Mahalo, um, I'm just wondering, would you mind, um, going to get help in putting what you shared in a chat? It was hard to take notes with all the information to make sure we get it right, but I'd like to share it out. So if you would ask, um, the gentleman managing the Zoom there, if he could put it in the chat, that would be so helpful. Thank you.
You know, Representative, um, we will have somebody enter it into the chat in a few moments. Mahalo.
Um, sorry, I'll add, um, we do try to keep our, like, social media and websites up to date, so if you also want to follow us on, we have an Instagram called Saint Matthew's Waianaealo. I usually try to keep that up to date and also our website. So if you want any more information about that, you can also visit there, but, I mean, you also get from the chat here, so.
Mahalo.
Sorry, is it on, is it also on the flyer, Instagram or not?
Our Instagram is on the food basket one, but it's not on the Kaiser one, but, okay.
Awesome. Any questions from our community? Comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none, mahalo again. Okay.
You know, I worked at the pier, Kai Pier down here for sixteen years with Maui Ocean Engineering. Every morning, I opened up the gate for fishermen, and then, uh, the last person out closed the gate. On the weekends, it was open till, uh, uh, twelve o'clock. We had a special person that would come there and keep it open for nighttime fishing. Now nobody fishes there at all. You know, in the lease of that pier. You know, in the lease of that pier, it was a board like this that gave the permission to to have that pier there in the first place, the fathers back then. And they it was the who are always open. The only way they got that pier is for the consent of Wa Manalo so that we could have fishing off the pier. And we've heard, you know, people have come, I know it now for sure because somebody told me about the lease. On the lease, if there's somebody that can get into the the department, if they want to argue, you know, argue with us about it. I don't care about that other room, that building over there. There if it's this danger about, there are people working in that area. They're working there. So how can they not let us go fish on the banks there? It's it's mostly older people with their grandkids and stuff out there fishing. You know, and I think there's something that really would be nice if there was somebody that has access to legally look at that that lease. Because they can't change it. You can't take and change the thing. I know it's to the University of Hawaii now as the pier, I think. They, just because they took it over, that doesn't nullify the lease that Wa Manalo has. It can't. I don't see how in the world they could legally do that. So, and then Pione Beach. You know, I'm getting old now. And and I know about all the people down there, how we finally got the pier, we were able to build that ramp that we did. There was, it was because of handicap. No access to the water. We all, right there at the homestead, especially at the homestead. How do you go to the water to heal? Are people that are that are that are heavy or have bad legs? You can't go in the water. We had, we carried one boy down there to the water to heal. One of the kids, one of the rest of the but it just seems like we gotta do something so that the people, my wife got to crawl the side of the bank. That's not right. And when we have the ability to to do something for the people, you know, especially for the elders.
Mahalo, Koshasen, for your comments. Duly noted. All right, anymore?
Aloha, my name is Marilyn Ayet. I'm with Wa Manalo Assembly of God Church. And we heard that you folks were having a meeting tonight. So we wanted to come out and ask the board if there is any stipulations where we decided to go out every last Saturday of the month to do an outreach in our community, like sharing the word, singing, praying for the people. Where is it? Where are we allowed to go? That I know passing recreation, we do need a permit that I know, but around in our neighborhood. Where is, do we need any permission from the board? Concerning that?
Mahalo Auntie Marilyn, for your, your question. Not legally trained, however, I will say this. Wa Manalo Assembly of God has been a longstanding pillar in this community, right there on Kalani on Ole Highway as well. I don't believe you need our permission, you know, to exercise your faith. I don't believe you need our permission, you know, to build Pilina with community again. Because you, Wa Manalo Assembly of God again is a part of this community, is part of the fabric and thread of this community. You know, you guys are the community. So mahalo again for coming out this evening and waiting patiently. And, you know, just for the the time, the appropriate time for you to ask your question. I can say with confidence that you don't need our permission.
Because last week, in the month, we had a not a run-in, but I guess because we use the bullhorn to speak and that we're in Haleapuni in that center part, but the dogs, I guess, got with the bullhorn. So one of the neighbors had told me that they're gonna call a Christmas. I says, okay, yeah. So they came, but they were really nice about it. They said, because the bullhorn, don't use the bullhorn around in the neighborhood because it irritates the dog's ears. So they start barking and barking and somebody was trying to put their baby down to sleep. I couldn't sleep, so she fought the peace on us. But we just wanted to come up after we went back to the church and we had our meeting. So we decided that if we could come to the meeting, just to share.
Yeah, always. Yeah.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight.
You're very welcome.
My sister Lorena, here with me, that wanted to come and see what we can do about that.
Yeah, mahalo.
All right.
And I I do believe there's county ordinances when it comes to noise. However, you know, beyond 8:00 AM and before 10:00 PM, I believe it's wide open. Yeah, and I don't believe the the decibel level from a bullhorn will exceed, you know, the public nuisance threshold. So I think you guys are safe within that. Now, there may be association rules because I don't live in Haleapuni, so I cannot speak for them. You know, and there may be personal preferences when it comes to the individual household. But again, that's part of what what building Pilina with community is. So.
I think that's sort of concerned about associate, different associations in our community. So we just wanted to check that. We need to go to the community association. I just need to know who we need to see if it's okay. But I came to you folks tonight and then folks, that it's okay.
Mahalo, and if I can just make my personal comment. I would challenge the science that the bullhorn irritates the dog. But that's just me. I would question the science. Oh, really?
Okay, thank you.
What's your background? Anyway, mahalo Auntie. God bless. Okay. Anyone else from our community this evening? Hearing and seeing none. In the interest of time, let's move on to our elected officials' reports, starting with our councilwoman. Esther Kia Ina.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, everyone. My name is Irene. I'm the constituent services coordinator to Councilmember Esther Kia Ina. She apologizes that she's unable to make it tonight, so I'll be doing the report instead. So Councilmember would like to mahalo everyone who came to the ceremony of the unveiling of the new park signage for the Wa Manalo District Park multipurpose building in honor of Auntie Gracie Aviato. As a follow-up to last month's neighborhood board meeting regarding Auntie Barbara's concerns regarding speeding on Laumilo Street. Our office submitted a request to the city administration outlining the concerns about excessive speeding on Laumilo Street. We received the following update from HPD that from May 28th to June 5th, officers from both the day and night watches monitored the area at various times. But no speeding citations were issued during this period, but they will continue to monitor the area. Our office is still waiting for a formal response from the city's Department of Transportation Services, whether speed mitigation measures are warranted. Regarding the farmer's market contact information, so the city's Department of Parks and Recreation has the People's Open Market, which takes place every Thursday on the windward side. So I reached out to Chair Kimiona and shared the contact information with him. And then regarding the amount of speed humps on Hehe Manu Street, our office followed up with the city's Department of Transportation Services, and they are proposing six vertical type traffic calming measures on Hehe Manu such as speed humps or speed cushions. Councilmember Esther Kia Ina is still determining the dates for Toward the Trash. Additionally, she also hopes to provide the white paper on the city landfill history at the next neighborhood board meeting. She has completed it and is currently having it reviewed. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mahalo, Irene. Please stand by for questions from our members. Board members online, do we have any questions for the office of Esther Kia Ina? Hearing and seeing none. I just want to mahalo our councilwoman and Irene for the follow-up. And then we look forward to, you know, her coming back and seeing her face next month. It was really nice spending time with her and the celebration and ceremony for Auntie Gracie and the rec room there. So mahalo, Irene. Please stand by for questions and comments from our community. Community members online, do we have any questions and comments for the office of Councilwoman Esther Kia Ina? In person? A'ole, mahalo again, Irene.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Senator Chris Lee. Seeing none. Okay, next up, our very own Representative Lisa White.
Aloha. So first up, I just wanted to, maybe I'll put a couple things in the chat. Since I have so much trouble getting everything down in notes in time. But we are going to have, Senator Lee and myself are going to have a legislative town hall in the Wa Manalo Library. I feel like in this particular meeting, in this context, there are so many different reports and so much going on. It's not a time to talk story. But on June 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, we will be there to to share what happened in this last legislative session. And mostly just to answer questions and talk stories so that we can talk about what you want to talk about. And the timing is very good because it's a time where we have a little more time. So if there's ideas, things that you want us to follow up on, it's a really good time to be able to do that. So I urge you folks to share the news and please come talk to us. Otherwise, we just sit there by ourselves. The another thing I wanted to mention is I'm gonna go visit the Wa Manalo Waste Water Treatment Plant on June 19th at 11:30 AM. I don't know if that's an interesting thing to anyone besides myself, but if any neighborhood board members wanted to join me, if that was of interest to you, there are some plans to improve the plant and go from the injection well to R1 water that can be reused for agriculture, which I think is very exciting. So that's something that you folks could join if you wanted. Let me know. You can just reach out to my office. I put the information in the chat as well. We had so many graduations, which is a favorite time of year for me. I love it. And I just wanted to mention, you know, at Kailua High School, we did lose our principal, which is, you know, very disconcerting to have that turnover. But I'm so happy that our new principal will be Jill Laboy, who was the principal at Kailua Intermediate and before that at Mana Wili. She took a break to finish her PhD, and when she finishes in July, she'll start the new job. And the thing that is extra special about her, she not only knows the community very well, but she knows a lot of the specific students that will still be at Kailua High School that were her previous students. And so she's really gonna hit the ground running. So I'm pleased with that. And also just wanted to mahalo Principal Jamie De La Cruz for the fantastic job that they've done at Wa Manalo Elementary, fixing up the school. Right? They had some state funds, but the school really took leadership and worked with community members to get the place painted, landscaping, a lot of repairs, and the mural. So really impressed with the work that they've done. So now that it is interim, I am working, I have been visiting a lot of the Kahale because I took on homelessness in my committee this year. They added homelessness to Human Services. So I've gone to five so far, trying to learn more about how we're spending our money and how we can spend it best. And then the other thing I'm doing is I'm trying to get ready for the federal changes that we are expecting to Medicaid and SNAP and even to housing, federally funded housing. So we don't know what will happen. And while we have some time set aside for all the legislators to go back into a special session after Congress in Washington DC passes and the President signs a budget. Until that time, we don't know what will happen, but it would not make sense to wait till then to start planning and thinking of how we can respond. So one of the issues with SNAP, Medicaid, and federal housing vouchers is there are going to be new work requirements, 80 hours a week, which is a lot for a lot of our Medicaid beneficiaries. People who are disabled will still be exempt. But other people at this time, if you have a child, a dependent who is 18, who is younger than 18 at home, you do not have to work eight hours a month. That's gonna change if they get their way. It will be anyone who, unless you have a child under the age of seven. So that means for most stay-home parents, even if they have multiple children, given the cost of childcare, maybe they cannot afford to work and they will be required. In addition, Kopuna, the age right now for exempt from work requirements is 55. That will move to 65. So there's a lot of things to plan for. And yeah, so that's what's going on. All right, mahalo. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mahalo, Representative Martin. Please stand by for questions. Members of the board online, do you have any questions for our representative?
I think I do. I just wanted to ask Brett Martin if she was listening to the conversation earlier about the trucks on the beach and the other issues that have resulted in, frankly, damage to the beach through deep ruts and such, and who knows what additional issues are happening to any wildlife that might be there or danger to people for that matter. And obviously, we're not getting anywhere with the way we're approaching it. So what might you think up as a way to address that problem? Over to you.
So it's it's obviously an ongoing issue that I've been hearing about for years, as have you. You know, it's, once we get onto the beach, you're right, then that is state. You know, anything below the high watermark suddenly becomes state, although HPD and state docare can can collaborate and help enforce on each other's turf. But, you know, I think it would, I'm not sure. I, if, you know, we don't have docare staff to be like, to respond quickly. They are spread around the island. So if docare were to get involved, it would have to be like, they would have to plan to be there that evening and just wait to, I guess, you know, to catch people. But I'm not sure how they can catch people that are in a large vehicle, you know what I mean? Possibly driving away from them at high speed. So I'm not sure, Ted, that, you know, that type of of encounter is usually HPD, which is why HPD always says, call us. Yeah, I understand. I understand your frustration. I'm frustrated too. I'm not sure, you know, the only thing we would be able to add different would be a docare component. And they are more targeted towards, you know, people like breaking fishing laws and things like that. Not so much for possibly violent situations with large vehicles.
And the additional problem there is they're only dealing with the state, so they can't deal above the high watermark, as you know. That's, in fact, to Quikay's point that's often made, the the beneficiaries of of that land are actually, that's actually part of the of the land trust. And so the Native Hawaiian communities have the ultimate say, one would think, over how that is managed and and operated. As the land is held in trust for them. So it gets complicated.
It is complicated.
Number one is barriers. I mean, I think we'll go, maybe what we should do is Brendan, myself and a few others, go just take a look at where the obvious access points are and see if there's some barrier solution that couldn't at least impede it, if not halt it. And, uh, and start that way.
You, you heard, um, Director Thielen, she asked for, you know, specific locations and she is willing to try to work with you folks. And if the barriers, you know, if they can't get rocks the right size, you know, she said they can use concrete blocks. So I think, I, I do think it's, uh, blocking the access points is more city purview. And I heard willingness to, to work with you.
Yep, I think that's correct because the access points are on, on city property. And so that the state won't have anything to do with that. Uh, so we'll, we'll start with that. We'll see what we can do to get a good review of logical places to put barriers or impedances of some kind and, uh, go from there.
Mahalo Ted, is, is that it?
We'll go, we'll go with that.
And I, I'd like to drop in a comment, you know, if, if we're saying that the access point is, uh, city and county jurisdiction. Truly, the access point is state D O T because they gotta drive on the highway before they do the park. Right? So, you know, we, there's a shared kuleana here.
Yeah.
Amongst all government agencies to ensure, number one, public safety. Yeah. However, we gotta also remind ourselves that we cannot step on, we cannot, we cannot deny, you know, the state's constitution, Article twelve, Section seven. A year ago today, we launched a forty foot canoe from Waimea Nalo Beach Park. Yeah. And the only way to get access to the ocean is through those trees. You know? There's a, there's a fine line, there's a balance here between, you know, between ensuring the public safety and ensuring the constitutional rights of the Aboriginal Indigenous people of Hawaii are up kept and upheld with integrity. So I, I'm always open to those conversations, you know, that Ted, the, the issue that I have is I don't have the time to organize others. So if city, if county, if state, if community members like yourself Ted can organize the listen ins and talk stories, I will try and make myself available. And, and I'm sure others would too. Mahalo for that.
We'll give it a try.
Yeah, let's go, let's go for it. Um, other members of the board, do we have any questions or comments for our representative? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, members from our community online? In person? Hearing and seeing none. Mahalo Representative for making the time this evening. And, you know, I, I know it was, uh, it wasn't, uh, the most pleasant, uh, legislative session, but mahalo for your service.
Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening. Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, next up, uh, this evening is our governor's report. You have a representative for Governor Josh Green. Hearing and seeing none, I want to call forward. Uh, Casey.
Oh, Casey Abbe, uh, H D O T Highway.
Mahalo. At this time, Casey.
Okay, let me share my screen. You can hear me?
You can, oh.
Yeah, you see my screen? Okay, yeah. Good evening, Vice Chair Kamaki O'Hello and members of the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey Abbe from the State D O T Highway Division. It has been a couple of months since my last meeting, which was back in February. After the February meeting, I received two emails. Um, one concerned the speeding along Colonial Highway where, um, the caller is requesting more speed tables, which is similar to, similar requests from Ray Cabrera, which I'm still working on with our traffic branch. The second email is concerning the speeding along Hei Manu Street that intersects with Paul Lima Street and its effects on motorists trying to exit Paul Lima Place. I had to inform the caller that, uh, the streets are under the city and county jurisdiction. So I had to inform the caller that, uh, she needs to reach out to Mayor Representative or the, or the city councilperson. But during my field inspection, um, exiting Paul Lima Place can be challenging if motorists are speeding along Hei Manu Street and Paul Lima Street due to the limited sight distance. During my field inspection last week, I noticed the keep right sign was missing on the median concrete island just as you pass Humu Niki Street going towards the golf course. I will be working with our maintenance crew on installing a new sign. Also, I noticed two pedestrian crossing signs, um, were damaged at the Nakini Street intersection. I'll also be working with our maintenance crew of installing the new signs. Back in January, the board requested the state D O T to install delineators at the Maoka Corner across, um, McDonald's to discourage illegal overtaking. During one of my field trips, I noticed that without any delineators installed on the existing white curbing in front of McDonald's, vehicles can also illegal park and overtake like the Maoka Corner. Working with our traffic branch, we will be installing delineators on the existing curbing to discourage illegal parking and overtaking. And we agree with the board's recommendation on installing a delineator post on raised curbing on the Maoka side to prevent overtaking. We apologize it took so long for our traffic brands, but, um, they're very short handed, uh, manpower wise. The traffic branch is still studying the board's request to install a speed table at the crosswalk front of McDonald's and at Saint Matthew's Church. So I'll report back at a future meeting. And finally, at the February's, uh, meeting, a question was asked about the status of our next resurfacing project from Makai Pier to Sand Beach. I'm have to report that our next resurfacing project will be from Makai Pier to Honamua Bay Road. The project is scheduled to be advertised soon with a tentative bid opening in the fall of this year and construction starting in twenty twenty-six. I'll provide any, uh, additional information at a future meeting. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Mahalo Casey, please stand by. Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions for Representative from H D O T?
Yes, I have two, uh, Quike.
Go ahead Ted.
Uh, Casey, very nice report. Thank you for the concise set of information and the, and the progress to date. There's two things that, uh, are still open. In the, on, on, um, Makai side of the highway, uh, between Kiono and, uh, and Beach Park, there's a gap in the, in the railing, uh, on the Makai side. It's easily wide enough for a truck to park into. And so people do park their trucks in that gap and, uh, concern about the tires getting awfully close to the sand berm and the potential damage to the, uh, and then undermining the highway there. So we had talked in the past about, uh, a ballard, a ballard or something to prevent that from happening. It's also no mark, no parking. Yeah. So that's, uh, a, a couple of things to think about there. So that's one item is to close up that gap or make it inaccessible to parking of trucks. Uh, the second is regarding the phase three of the resurfacing. What we were looking to do if we possibly can is meet with your design team or open, get, generate a relationship early on, uh, before the thing goes out for bid to understand what is, what the content and the nature of the work is. So if we see something that the community thinks, uh, may be missed or should be thought about twice, we have a chance to do that early on in the game rather than after the bids have already been, uh, solicited and opened and everything. So if we can find a way to meet with your design team and understand what their ideas are, that would be a great opportunity for us all.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that back to our design team.
Yeah, right on. Appreciate.
Mahalo Ted, mahalo Casey. Uh, members? Any further questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. Um, Casey, I just want to mahalo you for, um, making the time this evening and I apologize for any miscommunication. However, you know, we, we made it happen and we're all willing to work. Please send my aloha to, uh, to Director Ed, yeah, uh, and invite him next time to come show up. We'd like to see him.
Sure.
Um, members from our community online or in person, do you have any questions or comments for H D O T? Uh, Casey, if you can please stand by, we have one question from a member of our community.
With the humps that you're putting in and all these new barricades and what about the fire trucks and the ambulance? And I'd like to, I know that every time they go over, they gotta slow down the fire trucks and the ambulance. It seems like, uh, it's gonna be a pretty bumpy ride. There's no suspension.
Yes, we understand there is a problem when it comes to the emergency vehicles, but that's why we come out to the neighborhood boards. The neighborhood boards are in, um, oversee the community and we have to try to go through them to make sure that they want these, um, speed humps in. As I mentioned in my presentation, there were requests to, um, add additional speed humps throughout Waimea Nalo because of the speeding through Waimea Nalo Town. And that's what our traffic branch are, are studying right now. But again, we bring it out to the community and the neighborhood board has, um, a say in it.
Yeah, I would think it takes, uh, you know, we have to consider the, the time that it takes to be rescued or, or, or a fire put out.
Yes, that's, that's weird. You as a public member can talk to your elected, um, neighborhood board members.
Mahalo. Mahalo Coach Larson for the question. Casey, I have a follow up question. So, um, for the, the length of stretch of road, is there a national traffic standard that, uh, that sets, uh, limitation on the amount of speed tables that can be installed within a mile?
What is that? Speed, uh, speed hump, you mean?
Yeah, speed hump, speed tables, it's.
Oh, speed humps.
Uh,
I can go double check with our traffic, but from understanding, no, it depends on the, um, design of the road and how posted speed limit. And again, this, this, uh, traffic hump thing is very, uh, it's a touchy sis- situation because of the, uh, emergency vehicles are concerned, but yet the neighborhood wants, um, uh, speeding to be controlled. So that's why we're coming out to the neighborhood board, but I can double check with our traffic branch.
Yeah, I have a follow up question, Casey. So has the deal, has H D O T, um, done the T A S on these speed humps or speed tables um, on the stretch of Colonial Nole Highway from, was that Bell Street all the way to Flamingo? Because I. Yeah, I have to, to, um, does the speed tables or speed hump add additional time for emergency vehicles in transport?
Okay, so you want us, you, you're asking if we did a study to see if it, if, if it does add additional time for the emergency vehicles?
Uh, yeah, it's just, if, if you have, I'm not asking for you guys to, um, initiate a study at this point in time. But I want to know, you know, um, because trust me, I appreciate, you know, the resources being allocated to Waimea Nalo and the response from H D O T to members of our community and this very board. I just want to know, you know, have H D O T add director sniff in, you know, um, take into account, you know, the express concern this evening on the additional time that it could possibly take for emergency responders to get to or from, you know, a response.
Okay, I would have to get back with you on that. I have to talk to our various offices.
Okay, mahalo. Um, in interest of time, you know, I would like to invite you back if, if you are so inclined.
Oh, yeah, uh, in, in the, in the email, I, I mentioned to the chair that I can come to, um, monthly meetings. I, I represent the D O T at other monthly meetings at the neighborhood, all the neighborhood boards. So along him on the agenda, I can come every month.
Okay, and that's up, that's up to the discretion of the chair. However, I will make sure that we notate that for him. Mahalo Nui. Oh, I, I see a, I see a hand waving up there, Ted.
Yeah, just wanna see if we, can we get, uh, Casey's presentation tonight, uh, made available to us?
Sure, sure. I can forward it to, um, Brandon.
Mahalo Nui Casey.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate your time this evening. Okay, moving on. Um, in interest of time, it's now nine oh three time check, uh, this looking for anybody who, do we have any representatives in the queue for, uh, Congresswoman Jotakura? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mahalo Nui. Um, Brandon, do we have corps? We have corps? Okay. All right. Next up on our agenda this evening is board business, um, a board business, eight A approval of regular meeting minutes. Well, uh, members of the board, uh, what is your pleasure? Before us, uh, we have on the agenda item approval of regular meeting minutes from Monday, May twelfth.
This is Moyata.
Go ahead.
No, this is Moyata, um, uh, moved to approve it.
Mahalo, members, we have a motion on the floor before you to approve the meeting minutes from May twelfth. Um, that was our regular board meeting. Do we have a second?
I second it, Wong.
Okay, mahalo Member Wong. Directors, we have a motion on the floor again to approve the meeting minutes from May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Um, motion made by Moyata and, uh, seconded by Member Wong. The floor is now open for discussion. Any comments, amendments? Discrepancies? Hearing and seeing none. All right, we'll close it. Let's call for the vote.
Okay, uh, Board Member Kenani Granberg?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Jenna McKeeg is absent. Uh, Board Member Lourdes Milan?
Aye.
Uh, Board Member Moyata Mokulehua?
Aye.
Aye. Board Member Kapio Lanini?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Board Member Ted Ralston?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Board Member Canella Kamahun, uh, Lo Hanuila is absent. Uh, Board Member Brenda Wong?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Chair Kimi Onakane is absent and, uh, Acting Chair Quike Kamakea O'Hello?
Aye.
Aye.
Mahalo members, um, next up, we have board business landfill site visit report. Position on the determination of next landfill site for Oahu. Does anybody, Mako, call to present on this?
Um, no, this is Moyata. I want, can we motion to postpone it again until we're able to do the tour with Councilmember Kiaina? Cause that's what we did last month.
Mahalo for your comment. I will defer this, uh, if. Yeah. Yeah. I'm just gonna defer this. Hearing no objections. All right. Next up, the recommendation to change or submit your positions at large. Um, Lulu brought this up at the beginning of the meeting and I will also defer this until Chair Conner returns. Any objections? Hearing and seeing none. And then lastly, the recommendation to submit a letter of support for, uh, to the congressional district on behalf of Hawaii Job Corps Hawaii. I don't believe we have a letter prepared, nor have we circulated any language. And so because of that, um, we will be deferring this item as well. However, members of the board, if you feel so inclined in your individual capacity to submit letters of support, um, Auntie Julie mentioned that, was it the seventeenth? Hearings? But anyways, in, in the meantime, if you feel so inclined in your personal capacity, um, to write letters of support for, uh, Ja- Job Corps Hawaii and especially the Waimea Nalo campus and all the good that they do for and within our community, um, please send letters as Auntie Julie, uh, requested to our members of Congress. Mahalo Nui Kako. Board members for joining us this evening, members, members of the community online and in person. Um, that concludes our board business for this evening. And, uh, go ahead.
But I, I just, uh, had my mic off. Shouldn't we take an action to, even though people can put individual testimony and shouldn't we do one on the, on, from a board perspective as well? Even though we don't have it prepared for this meeting, this isn't gonna go away easy. So this, this will be a six month battle and the more we can generate positive paper, the better off the, the job corps is gonna be, I think. So what if we go ahead and do one for the, from the board anyway, which should take a two months to cycle through our process? But I would recommend we do that.
You know, Ted, I, I appreciate your comment and, and your wisdom. Um, I just, let me read this for you. The agenda item this evening is recommendation to submit a letter of support to the congressional district on behalf of Hawaii Job Corps Hawaii. Um, we could take a position tonight to make a recommendation. However, um, I don't believe we can at this moment in time, you know, discuss the contents of the letter. And because we haven't prepared any language to present to the board this evening, you know, we can't necessarily take, uh, um, a position within a letter because we have due process. And the due process established by the current chair is that it has to go through committee first. So the recommendation must come from committee. Yeah, so I want to. Yeah, so I want to respect and honor um Chair Kaner's due process.
What committee could take this on?
Um, I I think it would be um. Community planning, possibly. I mean technically, it it could be any of the community, I mean, any of the committees. So whoever meets next. You know, it could be parks and wrecks just to take it up, as long as you put it on your agenda or. You know, you follow due process. To ensure that we are adhering to sunshine law. And then I would welcome it, you know, should I? Be. In this Kuleana to chair the next meeting. Respectfully Ted, you know, I I think all we can do tonight is is just this. Yeah.
Good.
But um, I'm with you Ted. Let's get it done.
You bet man.
So you know, so between now and that meeting and between now and this next meeting. Uh, don't wait for the, don't wait till the meeting to start. Running up language, drawing up language and having conversation, just make sure that we don't break sunshine law.
Got him.
Okay, got it? Okay, mahalanoi.
Got it.
Um, meeting announcements, the. Do you have, you have anything Brendan? You want to say that on the record? Go ahead, because this is your name right there.
Uh, no announcement does at this time from the Neighborhood Commission Office.
Okay, mahalo, okay. Next Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board, number thirty-two, regular monthly meeting will be held on Monday, July fourteenth. Twenty twenty-five at seven PM. Uh, here and will also be a hybrid meeting. Uh, twenty twenty-five Olelo broadcast schedule, the Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board, number thirty-two meetings are broadcast on Olelo. Channel forty-nine on the fourth Monday of the month at nine PM. And on the first and third Saturdays of the month at three PM. Video replay can be found at, the hyperlink will be in the chat. With that Kakou, um, I call this meeting. Guys want to chair this meeting?
Not just joking. But with that, uh, if we can ask some someone from our Poli Pule, Saint George, to please close us in Pule.
Uh, keep watch to your Lord with those who work or watch or weep this night. Give your angels charge for those who sleep. Uh, tend those. Who are sick. Keep watch over this community. In Jesus's name, amen.
Mahalo Kakou for making time and joining us this evening, uh, I. Pray health and blessings over you and the Ohana and please those who are attending here in person. May you make it home safely. With that, call this meeting to adjournment, nine thirteen.